Perfect, ready when you are.
Okay, I want to welcome everybody to today's Planning Commission. I would like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Janet, would you be so kind as to lead us in that?
Yes, no problem.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Janet, will you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Gupta?
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Here.
Chairman Hansen?
Present.
And staff is represented by Monowitz and Fox.
Beginning of every Planning Commission, we have an opportunity for oral communication by those who are present. For items that are not on today's agenda, the Commission can take no action to make us aware of things that are happening that you'd like the Commission to be mindful of. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak to us during the oral communication period?
We don't have anybody, but I would like to turn it over to my colleagues, money, Pierwall, who will just go over the public comment portion of the meeting and how that will work.
Please.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good morning, Chair. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will be using the raise hand feature per item. Once we open the agenda item for comments, please click the raise hand feature to raise your hand and to speak on the agenda item. Those who are joining by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. So since this is a public comment section, you can speak on items that are not on the agenda. So at this time, I would like to ask members of the public to click, raise their hand so that I can be notified if you want to speak on public participation. Mr. Chair, at this time, I, nobody has raised their hand.
Thank you.
I'll give maybe five more seconds.
Not a problem.
Okay, I think we're good. No more, no more public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consideration the minutes, we have two sets of minutes that have been amended and distributed. Is there any more updates, comments? If not, could I have a motion for approval?
I move. I move to approve amended minutes.
A nice second.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
It appears that it's passed unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to the next portion. We have one item on the agenda. For those who are attending a Planning Commission for the first time, our normal procedure is that the staff will do a presentation of which the Commission will then ask questions of staff, followed by, if so desired, a presentation by the applicant, of which then it's an opportunity for the Commission then to talk to the applicant. After that, we open to the public for comments, of which today we're allowing five minutes per comment, of which then also the Commission may ask further questions. At that point, we'll close the public comment and we'll come back to the Commission for discussion and further questions and hopefully coming to resolution today. So I will start off with staff doing, Janet, can you please read in the today's item and followed by staff with their presentation?
Thank you. Item number one, owner, Skir LLC. Applicant, Anise Bishara. File number PLN 2018-00330. Location, 37 Frenchman's Creek Road, unincorporated, Half Moon Bay. And then we have the project planner, Summer Burleson. Summer?
Thank you, Summer Burleson, project planner. Good morning, Chair Hansen and Planning Commission, representative staff and members of the public. This item is for a coastal development permit. Sorry. Hopefully you can see this. So this item is for the Planning Commission's consideration of a coastal development permit and planned agricultural district permit to legalize two non-soil dependent greenhouses in support of infrastructure to facilitate agricultural use on the property. The property is a 164 acre parcel located at 37 Frenchman's Creek Road in the rural unincorporated area of Half Moon Bay. The project site is zoned PAD CD, which stands for Planned Agricultural District Coastal Development, and properties to the north, east, and south have the same PAD CD zoning. The adjacent property to the west is located within the city of Half Moon Bay with a zoning designation of open space, which allows for open space recreation and agricultural uses. The applicant is proposing to legalize two non-soil dependent greenhouses shown here, identified as greenhouse nine N and nine S. Both are over 11,000 square feet in size. These greenhouses were constructed by previous property owners without permits. Based on historical aerial imagery research, large hoop house structures were erected in the location where these two greenhouses are located sometime between 1993 and 2003. And then around 2007, 2008, the hoop houses were removed and these two greenhouses were constructed. Since the original hoop houses were erected to current time, it doesn't appear that the remaining area around it, that's highlighted here in the red dashed box, has been used for any sort of agricultural activity. In addition, the project includes a new bio retention area, which is shown here with this red line for onsite treatment to be located. It's located in an area where there's an existing drainage swale that's adjacent to an interior paved roadway. That's just south of greenhouse nine S and approximately 80 cubic yards of grading is necessary to construct that bio retention area. Frenchman's Creek Road commences at its intersection with Highway one and it extends approximately 3,500 feet within the city of Half Moon Bay until it reaches the city county border. The applicant is pursuing separate permits with the city of Half Moon Bay for roadway work improvements that fall within the city's jurisdiction. The project before you today is limited to roadway improvements within the county's jurisdiction. So extending from the county boundary line to the property back here. The the roadway improvements include constructing for turnouts along the segment of the county portion. One of the turnouts will require some minor grading, approximately 135 cubic yards of grading due to its location adjacent to an embankment. Otherwise, roadway improvements include paving repairs within the existing paved roadway where necessary to meet fire standards, fire lane striping, no parking signs, and all work within the for the roadway improvements will occur within the existing 43 foot wide roadway. Private roadway, I should say. So just taking kind of a step back, the project area, as you can see here, a majority of the parcel consists of hills that form a relatively flat valley through the center of the parcel. Where development constructed in the 1960s for agricultural purposes exists, and this is where the greenhouses and water tank location is. And the rest of the development in this valley area consists of barns and metal buildings and storage warehouses that have all been used for agricultural purposes. Historically, agricultural use on the property has included growing orchids, ornamental flowers, and cherry trees. Staff has evaluated the project for conformance with the applicable general plan policies, local coastal program policies, and zoning regulations and found the project to be in conformance with each set of policies and regulations. The policies and standards regulate a number of resources, including biological resources. General plan and local coastal program policies seek to minimize significant adverse impacts within and adjacent to sensitive habitats. A biological report prepared by Seoul Ecology for the property concluded that onsite development associated with this project is over 180 feet from the nearest sensitive habitat, which is the stream channel. Specifically, the local coastal program requires establishment of a 30-foot buffer zone from riparian corridors and permits limited uses and activities within these buffer zones, including impervious surfaces and repair maintenance of roadways when no feasible alternative locations exist. For offsite roadway improvements, the biological study concluded that there are no direct impacts to biological resources along the roadway. There are some riparian areas associated with the culvert, with some culverted drainages that exist on either side of the roadway segment. And you can see here in this photo, the four turnout locations and the details to each of those locations. So turnout two and four specifically, you can see the hatched areas in the detail show map riparian corridor, again, associated with some drainage culverts. The proposed turnouts have been cited and designed to avoid sensitive habitats. As I mentioned, they are within the 30-foot buffer, but pursuant to the local coastal program, given this work would be consistent with the local coastal program allowance, policy allowance for impervious surface and roadway, roadway repair and maintenance activities. Additionally, conditions of approval have been included to ensure that there are no impacts to any riparian corridors or to any wildlife resources when this work is being completed, which includes pre-construction surveys and exclusionary fencing around these areas. The project conforms with the visual resources policies of the general plan and the local coastal program. The property, as you can hopefully see here in this photo, is surrounded by hills contained on the same property. So it's minimally visible. It's not obtrusive to the area due to the existing topography surrounding the property and the project site specifically, and its distance from Highway one, which is over a half mile from Highway one. The project is not visible from any public view sheds or residential zoned areas. The two greenhouses that are being legalized as part of this project are less than 18 feet in height, where 36 feet is the maximum allowed height within the PAD zoning district. The greenhouses are just of simple construction and design. They're constructed of metal hoop truss and framing with non-reflective coverings, as you can see here in these photos. The water tank is less than 11 feet in height and made of corrugated metal, and a condition of approval has been included in the recommended findings and conditions to ensure that the exterior finish of the water tank is non-reflective. There are a few segments or swaths of prime agricultural lands on the property as shown on this slide. The PAD, Planned Agricultural District, prioritizes the types of agricultural uses on prime agricultural land and allows kind of secondary agricultural uses on prime agricultural land, subject to the issuance of a PAD permit, which is being sought under this application, as non-soil dependent greenhouses on prime agricultural land requires a PAD permit. The project has been reviewed for conformance with the applicable general plan, local coastal program, and zoning regulation policies and standards for agricultural resources. There are no alternative sites on the project parcel due to the topographic, sorry, constraints, which limit development to that central valley, which is relatively flat compared to the surrounding hills, which are designated other lands. The project area is, as I mentioned, is bordered by these hills, which makes it infestable to locate, reasonably locate development on those steeply sloped hill sides. The location of the project doesn't, does not diminish or impair agricultural activity or productivity of any surrounding lands. It's pretty self-contained within that valley area. And the project does support the clustering of agricultural development on the property within this central, the located valley area. The project will continue to support commercial crop production with supportive improvements to facilitate and to support agricultural use in an efficient and safe manner. The owners are also, will be reactivating and maintaining 23,000 square feet of commercial cherry orchards on the property. And the parcel is under Williamson Act contract. The property was placed in Williamson Act contract in 1966 and currently remains under contract. The county has reviewed the project for, and the parcel for compliance with the Williamson Act and has determined that the parcel does comply with the Williamson Act regulations. The project is in conformance with the water supply policies of the general plan and the water supply criteria of the zoning regulations. The property has historic water rights to Frenchman's Creek and are authorized to divert over 10 acre feet of water per year from Frenchman's Creek, which is pumped to this reservoir at the top of the hill on the property. And that reservoir then provides the water to the greenhouse complex area and development. And that's been in place for, that system has been in place for a long time. The total annual estimated water use for agricultural operations on the property, including the legalization of these two greenhouses for ag operation, would not is estimated to be about four acre feet, which is well below the 10 acre feet that is permitted. And the new water storage tank will aid in efficient irrigation for the greenhouses. It essentially is a water recycling system. So excess water runoff can be collected inside the greenhouses and filtered and circulated back through the system. The project site is located in a very high fire hazard severity zone. The San Mateo County Fire Department has reviewed and conditionally approved the project for water supply flow and access. The project consists of non-havocable structures to support agricultural activity and the number of persons affected on the project site at any time is relatively low due to this type of use. The Agriculture Advisory Committee has reviewed and recommended approval of the project at their March 9, 2020 ag advisory meeting. A mitigated negative declaration, which included the subject project scope, was adopted on November 15, 2019. At the time, the county issued initial cannabis cultivation licenses for cultivation within legal greenhouses on site. Pursuant to Section 15164 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, staff has prepared an addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for minor corrections and clarifications, and that addendum is included as attachment or as Section C of the staff report. The addendum does not include any substantial changes or present any new significant impacts or add any new mitigation measures. And therefore, staff has determined that the addendum does comply with Section 15164 of the SECO guidelines. The Planning Commission is being asked to consider the addendum with the adopted mitigated negative declaration and make findings which are outlined in Attachment A of the staff report that there are no new significant effects, major revisions, or new mitigation measures, and therefore, further environmental review is not required, which staff believes to be true. And so, staff's recommendation today is that the Planning Commission approve the coastal development permit and planned agricultural district permit, county file number PLN 2018-00330, by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval in Attachment A of the staff report. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Suma. Very nice presentation. Yeah, I do have one question. Right off the bat, this morning, we got an email from a neighboring farm, and I could not figure out the location of the farm and to the project, and are they, are those concerns on county land where we have some say? Or is it all in city land? So you, could you help me with that letter?
Yes, the the letter received was from a property owner at, I believe, 780 Frenchman's Creek Road, which is the property just inside of the city limit. Let me pull up a map I had here. Sorry. So from this map, and the that property, 780 Frenchman's Creek Road, is this property here. And this is, if you can see this dashed line here, basically, the this property line of their property is the city county border. So that property is just inside of the city limits. And here's the parcel. So it's this segment from their property on is the county portion.
I'm sorry, I forgot to unmute myself. We have first, thank you for the update. We have no jurisdiction from the Highway one to the city limits, correct?
That's correct.
I did take a ride out there on Monday. That road is severely degraded. I did notice they were asking for speed bumps and stuff for that. Traffic, I don't think, saw anybody exceed 20 miles per hour simply because of the potholes. The, also, there is a speed limit sign that says 25 on there. I did go all the way up on the road to where it says, keep out, and this means you, which I presume is at the border of the applicant's area. Traffic was significant, which also did surprise me. Not just an observation on a Monday morning is the amount of cars on the road, going in the road and leaving the road, but it didn't seem to be going to the applicant's property. But I was, just for reference, more than I would expect on that type of road. And also for reference, the next valley east is where I lived for three years. So I actually know the dirt road going through the property because I had made access back in the 1970s. Do any of the other commissioners have questions? And I'll start off with Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Yes, Commissioner, I have a couple of questions. And some of them relate to what you were saying regarding the limits of the, of the project and location. Based on what I was reading, it's it looks like this project, it may be required a different jurisdiction, jurisdiction permits. And, and, and I, I want to know from Summer if she may can clarify for me. If we approve this project, what will be the consequences of, I think it's Half Moon Bay, you said, that falls into the category of the approval of the permit, and it wouldn't make sense to approve one project if we don't have a hard date in terms of the jurisdictions that may be required to approve the total concept of this project. That's let me see. Yeah, that's what may be my main concern. And the other one deals with the standard of access that you were, that you were discussing, Commissioner. If, if, if if Summer can kind of like clarify what would be, what would be the consequences of approving a project that required two jurisdictions, two jurisdiction permits? And if one city or county would not approve, what will be the consequence at the very end?
Yes, Commissioner Santa Cruz, thank you. First, the roadway improvements within the city are, the first portion of the roadway does require the city of Half Moon Bay approval through either a, through their standard permitting process for that type of work. And the applicant, I know, is been working with the city of Half Moon Bay and with the property owners along that segment of the roadway and with the fire department as well to to seek those permits. I would need to defer to the applicant as to where exactly they're at in that stage of the process. We do, for the county, we do have the jurisdiction of only that portion in the county. And in terms of And in terms of approving, the applicant getting, obtaining one approval and not the other, it is the applicant's responsibility to obtain all necessary permits that they are required to do the improvement work. And so if, for some reason, they were unable to obtain the City of Half Moon Bay's approval, they would essentially, I think, not be able to proceed forward with the, the project.
So Summer, in other words, if we, if we decide to review and approve this project, we can have a contingency clause that will require the approval of the Half Moon Bay in order to proceed with a total approval?
I think that you could put a condition of approval as a disclosure that they shall seek and obtain all approvals from the City of Half Moon Bay for that portion of work within the city.
Okay, okay. Another question that I have.
Before we move on, could I jump in on this? Because I think there's a couple of points raised that are worthy of further discussion. What we can require of an applicant is based on a nexus to the impact that their project will have and the mitigation that we require of them to address that impact needs to be proportional to the impact. I think in the situation that we have here, and I think the person who wrote this letter acknowledges it, we have an applicant who's been very generous and proactive in trying to address the roadway needs that serve other people on the road. And in fact, they volunteered to, you know, pay for improvements and to seek the necessary approvals that arguably go beyond just the impact of this project. So I just want to put a word of caution out there in terms of what we require of the applicant before they can proceed because it needs to be both connected to the impact of their project and proportional to that impact.
Okay, another question that I have, either for, for you, Steve, or for Summer, is the Williamson Act that will require a 10-year contract with the, with the landowner. So I assume that you guys had that on record, that they already have signed that 10-year contract?
Yeah, so the Williamson Act contracts run with the, run with the land and they automatically, automatically renew every year. So every year, it gets extended for another 10 years. And so this contract was placed by the former owner. It continues to be in place and it will continue until such a time that the applicant or the county goes through the non-renewal or cancellation process. So the contract is in place and staff concluded that the activities proposed by the project are consistent with the terms of that contract.
So for my own clarification, is somebody go into automatic contract? So for 10 years, every year will, will renew. So if I renew this year automatically, next year I decided not to renew, I still have to comply nine years?
That's correct. That's the way the Williamson Act works.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tim. I acknowledge your head. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Ramirez, any question?
Yeah, just along the lines of what Commissioner Santa Cruz was saying, I would like to hear from the applicant with regards to where they are with the application for the Half Moon Bay permit for that road, which I think, you know, we should, in my opinion, you know, we, we approve what is our part of this particular permit. And obviously, Half Moon Bay has their own way of, you know, getting theirs. My question, my second question has to do with regards to water, water rights. And I see that they have a pretty significant amount of water allocated to this property. And they anticipate that they will only use about 4.0 acre feet. Does this, and I'm not sure if actually, Summer actually clarified this. The 4.0, is that only for the use of the cannabis? Or does this also include all of the, what would be needed for the additional agriculture on the whole area? So, yeah, so that's, that's my question. So, Summer?
Yes, yeah, I would, I think I would need to defer to the applicant to clarify that. I believe it is the entire agricultural operation that would be supported on the property. But I would like to defer to the applicant to clarify that.
Okay, we'll wait for the applicant. You'd like us to speak? Yeah, that is accurate. That is all the water that will be needed for all the cannabis operations on the facility. And then to answer your question about the City of Half Moon Bay, you can, well, I can have our legal chime in as well, but it's not needed. We, the last eight months has been, you know, collaborating on roadwork plans with the neighbors. You know, we want to make sure everybody's happy with the roadwork that's happening. We've been through a lot of comments with them, all of them positive, nothing really detrimental to the project. We finally reached the stage where all owners are happy with the roadwork plans, essentially ready to submit to the city. The most recent plans really involved adding speed humps in certain areas where the, the, the other owners wanted. But, you know, this, this hearing today was actually a big critical point to us because we were gonna, you know, submit to the city on Friday, on, on, this week, as soon as that, right after, pending to see what the, what the, what the planning commission had to say about it.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that answer.
Any more questions, Commissioner?
No, not for me, no.
Okay, Commissioner Ketchum, do you have any questions of staff?
Yes, thank you. About the, the road. So there was a query on next door. Someone was asking about access to open space hiking via Frenchman's Creek Road, if anybody knew about that. And this conversation brings that to mind with this about, there's so much traffic there. And so maybe the applicant could tell us, but who, who, what properties have access? If this is a private, if this is private property, it's not a, a public right-of-way, is there any signage earlier on, on the road? For, for example, for these queries on next door saying private property, is it not a public, you know, anything like that? Because apparently, the community doesn't realize how private it is. And then it also does seem like, I mean, I understand the, the arrangement here to get the road segments approved in order to get this project. But over the long term, it would seem a formal maintenance agreement among the property owners that rely on this road would be needed. I understand that's not part of our process today, but it, it does seem like there's some problems here that could be sorted out.
Yeah, actually, along with the submittal of our plans, a lot of the owners wanted a kind of a release and a maintenance plan moving forward. And we've told, you know, the, the other owners along Frenchmans that we would take off, take on the significant chunk of the maintenance, somewhere between 70 to 80% of it. And so that's where we are on that. And as far as signage, Ed would want to?
Yeah, so basically, from after Casey's, we're sure that it's a private road going back into our property. And Ananda Farms as well, there's three property owners that have access, the Slater, Keet, Ananda Farms, and us, and the FAA. And it's no trespass, there's multiple no trespassing signs all the way along the road. And we have had hikers and people come up back. And usually, they get stuck at the blue gate, there's an FAA gate at the top of the hill. And sometimes when the FAA are usually up here, you know, once or twice a week, along with PG&E doing tree work and maintenance and stuff like that. And sometimes people get stuck behind there and we have to let them out. But essentially, it's private and, you know, no one's.
The signage is there, and then there's a phone number for my cell in case, you know, somebody does get lost. And then also, another parcel to access is our personal home right here on 511 Frenchmans, which is actually behind the, the project. It's the only residential property that's passed this operation. So, yeah, I guess on the facility itself, it's a private road. The only people allowed access are the owners of 511 Frenchmans, our personal home, and the FAA, and then PG&E, the fire department. The City of Half Moon Bay has used the blue gate. We don't even have access to that blue gate, to be honest.
At the top of the hill.
The top of the hill. It connects down, I think there's another access point there, but they'll use it to go some, some mountain. Or the FAA tower on, on, on the Skylar's Peak. And hikers is a big problem for us. We posted on Google, you know, no hikers up here, it's a private road. I've even requested to Google to put that there's a gate on the road and, you know, not say that there's an access. But, you know, it's bound to happen every now and then, somebody's gonna, you know, make a wrong turn.
Have somebody come up once every two weeks or something, and we just turn them around.
So that's not really the source of all the traffic people talk about on the road?
No, but a lot, a lot has been, I mean, at least lately, has been vegetation removal, PG&E, maybe tree trimming. We just had six trees taken out of the property. And, and then in us, our, you know.
Well, horse, yeah, with, you know, there's a horse ranch operation, that's, you know, a large operation. There's our operation, which, you know, we've got 20 cars here or so during the week, and then this is the high season right now. And then, you know, there's Greenheart Farms, whose business is up over, you know, 70, 80% right now with COVID-19, has their home delivery food. So their truck use has increased recently. And then Ananda Farms has a homestead and farm at the back as well. So, you know, there's, and there's all four of us that have operations that are going on. And just to go back on the road for a second, you know, Anice and I have spent the, over, over the last year, you know, working with the Half Moon Bay City, the fire department, three separate neighbors. And we've finally come to a plan that's ready to submit on Friday. We've already contributed, you know, over, you know, $80,000 in surveying, comments, legal. BKF Engineers has coordinated the road plans, and we're going to be contributing another $200,000 to the actual improvements of the road. And then the neighbors, there's two neighbors out of the three neighbors along that have verbally agreed to chip in $25,000 each. And then we're going to be taking over most of the road maintenance. And we've coordinated as a lead party of the road to, to the road maintenance as well as supporting all the plans.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gupta, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have question for the applicant. So going along the same lines about this private road, you mentioned that there's more traffic right now because of like PG&E trucks going by, clearing the brush and other maintenance type of things. So is this something that's happening more recently, or does that go on all the time?
So it's been going on all the time, especially since PG&E have had their bankruptcy file earlier, sorry, last year. There was about 20 trucks, you know, 20 trucks, vehicles, ATVs that they were sending up, you know, for a good three months.
Daily?
Every day, yeah.
There's a line here that starts here that supplies a lot of Half Moon Bay City with their power. So if one of the parcel goes down, you know, a big chunk of Half Moon Bay goes down. So it's a critical line that they have on our facility. They've even come in with helicopters and flown over multiple times.
And, yeah.
Dropped equipment off.
Dropped equipment, so just giving you an example.
But it is also, you know, the high season for like, you know, our, our operation here.
And then also, COVID-19 is, we do have carpool, carpool, as we've hired, you know, many locals in town to work. And so there's, carpool has stopped because of COVID-19. And so everyone's driving in their own cars as part of our SOP. But previously, before COVID-19, you know, people were carpooling in, especially the locals. It was part of our policy to keep traffic down. So, you know, there's some external factors right now that are, you know, have increased our, our usage. But as things calm down over the next, you know, eight weeks with the high season coming down for the nursery operation and then COVID-19 kind of fading out over the next few months, we should be able to substantially reduce our traffic flow.
Okay, so I probably missed some last part of your comment. But if you could be a little patient. So other than these other vehicles going, which are not truly, truly going to your property, what are the other activities which brings vehicles to your property?
So we, we would do, you know, public tours to the county and the city, but now we've stopped all tours. We're not open to the public, that's the main thing. We're wholesale business here. So honestly, the traffic that's not related to the day-to-day operation would be, you know, meetings, tours with the, the county, city jurisdictions.
All collaborators that we're working with. And then Anice and I, you know, we, our main residence is the 511 property, which is the neighboring parcel in the back of the valley. And, you know, we live here and have, you know, a few friends over every now and again, obviously not right now. But there's definitely, you know, a few cars contributed every day to our residence.
Personal residence.
So, so what do you mean by the tour of the property?
I mean, like, for example, we give tours to the county, to the city officials that are wondering how the operation works. We, we have like.
This is, sorry, this is in, in connection with the application?
Yeah, previously, there hasn't been any recently, but, you know, we're just giving you examples.
Previously, okay.
Has been tours for the City of Half Moon Bay. You know, the, the, we have given tours to representatives of the county previously, you know, but that's not, it's not any, by any means, a huge number.
Traffic number, no.
Yeah, I can't imagine that.
Personally, you know, if I have family coming to visit or, you know, friends coming to visit my house, a couple cars a day added.
But, yeah, you know, there's, we have delivery, deliveries going out from the operation, from the nursery operation on, you know, every other day basis. And, you know, they're in small trucks that shouldn't have, you know, very minimal impact to the road. And then, you know, other than that, it's just, you know, operational stuff.
And then I'd also like to mention that, you know, a lot of, since we own the adjacent residential property, it's two, three-bedroom house. We house.
Two, two, two.
Two houses that are three bedrooms each. We house at least four of our managers and employees here of the operation. So.
That reduces our.
That reduces a lot because, you know, they live here behind the facility, don't actually have to commute back and forth.
They don't live on the farm, they live on our proper, personal residence, residential.
So all the people working on your farm, greenhouses, whatever else maintenance is there, maintaining the property, they all live?
No, not all of them.
I would say 70%.
Well, 70% of our operation.
Yes.
But then there's also, so we have a sublease that we should maybe talk about this a little bit. Sorry, a lease to Dark Heart Nursery, who hold the other cannabis license on here. And they're the nursery license and we're the cultivation license. And so our operation, you know, has a significantly, you know, we only have about eight employees. And, you know, they only come in for three, three days a week. We have full, full capacity of our employees, and then four days a week, we only have four or five employees. We do have seasonal employees that come in during trim time, but they only come in for, you know, a few days and they all stay in our back house. So they're not leaving and going, and they all come in the same car together. It's like a kind of a subcontractor group, company that you pay. And then Dark Heart, the nursery operation, they have, you know, a few, they have more employees than us, and none of their employees are staying on site. And we actually have them here with us. So if you have any questions for them, you know, there's Jen, Jen who heads up the operation. Jen, you want to raise your hand real quick? And then there's Mel, works with Jen, and they're, they're our tenants of our property, since Anice and I are the property owners. But they have, and they have their own license. But again.
Thank you. Thank you very much for explaining that. Okay, so how long have you been the owner of this property?
Well, we put it in escrow back in 2017.
November.
November, and we spent a year, a lot of cleanup.
A year, we spent a year and a half cleaning the property up. There was a number of violations that.
So since 2017?
Yeah, but we closed escrow in, in 2018, March.
Yeah.
So a little over a year ago.
Yeah.
Okay, great, great. So, so my next question is, what do you expect the duration of your project, once all the approvals? Once all the approvals take place?
Wha- wha- what do you mean by that?
How long this operation will.
How lo, how long is it going to take to, uh from start to finish to complete this project?
To, to, to complete the road or the, this specific planning commission hearing?
Uh no, uh to complete the road and the construction of uh the um water. Tank, water storage tank.
Uh we have promised uh the neighbor that we were going to complete the road within ninety days. Of the, the CDX being approved by the city of Half Moon Bay. And we're putting an application on Wednesday. It's finally finalized. Camus can, can chime in if you want, but she has been dealing. With one of the neighbors' attorneys and they're releasing a form today because Half Moon Bay City wanted all the neighbors to sign off on the road. So that there was no liability to them. So we're getting that final sign off. All the comments have been, uh you know, handled.
Yeah.
And so that goes in Friday. As soon as the permit comes in for that, we've already paid a ten thousand dollar retainer to a contractor. Who has been agreed upon use uh by the neighbors. And as soon as we have approval, we're going to start at that. So I couldn't give you a timeframe, but you know, if we get approvals from the Half Moon Bay City, which we've been working with the Fire Department and the city over the last year on this. Road application, it should be a uh fast, reasonable time approval for the permit. So if that comes in, we will start uh the road improvements immediately and we'll have the, the, everything else done concurrently.
In case that's, I misunderstood your question, what's next or what's when the project end? Uh after these two greenhouses, there, there's no more cannabis cultivation on this facility, uh more space to add. This is.
Right.
Essentially it. Um anything else would be traditional ag, the cherry trees, hay production, um stuff like that.
Okay, great, great. Um so my uh. Next question is that uh I read in the report that this water storage tank construction has already started.
Yes, so what happened was.
I- is that without permit?
So we had applied for a permit with the, uh with the county, uh you know, over a year ago. And there was six different permits associated with the one building permit. And uh Anise and I, I were, you know, we made a mistake by starting, starting while we had the permit in place. Because there was no more comments from the building and planning department on that specific permit, the water tank permit. So we thought we would, we had the green light to go ahead. When we found out that we didn't, you know, uh we, we stopped.
So there was a violation on place because of that, but then we've also cleared out that violation because we got the, the building permit. That was the condition of removing the violation was to get that building permit issued, so we did that. We might have jumped the gun a little bit. But as of today.
All the violations.
Yeah, there's no, any issues with.
We fixed our uh mistake.
Okay, and my last question is that would you have some um. Additional work to do on your greenhouses to make them legal?
Uh as far as we know, the uh building plan, we work, our architect Ed Love and their office has worked, you know, over the last. Year and a half and this can be confirmed with Steve Monowitz uh to make sure that those, the greenhouses were up to code. And acceptable to current standards and that has all been signed off pending uh this planning commission approval. So no, there isn't anything other than electrical improvements.
Some stormwater treatment and the bio retention area.
That's below the greenhouse, but specifically to do with the greenhouses, there'll be an electrical permit that will be put in place. Uh but that is a, I don't, I, it's not, that's an over the counter permit. So other than that, everything else was already, you know. Uh good to go.
Yeah, all the structural calculations, the soil tests, everything calmed out. He, he did, he built the greenhouses, you know, up to code. He just didn't. Get the permit.
I mean, they're.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
No more questions.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have a follow-up? It looks like Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes, um so are, are you already operational? Are you producing already?
Yes, we've had our, our license since November of, of last year, but that was for, but that license covers the legal buildings. Um what we're talking about here is uh buildings that were illegally built that we're not operating in today.
So you, you're not producing in those illegal buildings at the moment, I, I would assume.
But today they're empty, they're just vacant.
Got it, got it. Okay, so now due to the nature of the business that you guys are in and it seems like, you know. Uh I don't know how much the public actually knows that you're there and, and what kind of a business that you're operating. Um do you foresee a need for uh added security?
So just to talk about security for a second, you know, we're isolated in this valley that, uh you know, is a mile or so from the highway one. Uh we have a gate that everybody, all employees have an app and they're all segmented out. So managers get certain access during certain times, uh all, all the time, certain other employees are only have access during certain times. We have fifty-one cameras on site, laser, like la- laser fences that will go around the property that if there's a break in the laser, it'll give us notification. You know, we do have facial recognition capabilities on all of our cameras, so if it gives us a notification if, you know, somebody is not registered. Uh there's license plate readers on the, 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 any cars coming in and out of the property that are, you know, read it through fog, night. Uh the whole lot. There's night vision cameras. Um we personally live on site as well. But not on site, but you know, to the adjacent property. So uh we have full access to the cameras and the alarm system the whole time.
Yeah, security did come up in our November when we did get approved. We had to show, and then we also signed up, subscribed to a third-party monitoring system. They'll monitor, you know, heat also in the greenhouses for fire, you know, smoke, burglary. Uh and they, they, they uh connect directly to the police department. Fire department can make a call if needed. Uh but since.
Oh, I just want to pipe in. This is Camus Steinmetz, Legal Counsel for Half Moon Grow, and there is a full um security plan. That was part of the condition of approval of the licenses that was issued in November. So that's covered under the licenses for operation, the security plan. And that's a county requirement on file with the county.
Excuse me, miss, Mr. Ramirez. Uh who's Camus Steinmetz? Who are you?
I'm Legal Counsel for Half Moon Grow.
For, for Mrs. Bishara?
For the applicant.
Okay, yeah, because I, I just like for people to recognize themselves. Maybe I didn't hear you well because. It, it's not helpful for me. Uh the same thing with Mr. Bishara. If your partner take turns in talking to you, because when you both talk at the same time, it's kind of confusing.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Uh all right, um I think you've uh clarified my question, uh the concern that I actually had about security. I think, again, because of the nature of the business that you're in. Thanks.
Do any other commissioners have any follow-up questions? Saying none, I'll talk directly to the applicant. Do you have a presentation or want to make comments directly to the commission?
Um, you know, I didn't, I wanted to keep it really brief and very uh big picture, um because, you know, we wanted to. A lot more time at the end if we needed to rebuttal the certain things that came up. Um just wanted to, you know, just brief overview introduction. My name's Anise Bishara. I come from the real estate industry, went into cannabis with Edward, my partner. He'll talk in a second. And uh we started an operation in Humboldt. It was very successful. He'll talk to you about that. And we came down here in a Half Moon Grow. In Half Moon Bay to start this operation to be a role model to the county as, you know, the first uh cannabis operation here. You know, we're very open book. Um we're not trying to cut any corners or bend any rules. There's a, you know, a lot of, like we said before, a lot of what we did the first few years of being here is cleaning up the property. Get rid of all the environmental waste, uh health and safety codes. Um and just bringing, revamping the property to a place where people would want to work and, and it could be successful. Um also I mentioned that we own the adjacent property here on five eleven Frenchmans, uh where we live personally and we house our managers. Um and so the reason why we're here today on this uh planning commission hearing is, you know, like I said, we're trying to clean up this property. And, you know, legalizing buildings is obviously a, a main concern um for fire reasons, for fit, safe and, and, and health reasons. Not only for the farm, but also for us as adjacent neighbors. We want to ensure that, you know, everything is up, up to code. And um and so a lot of the things we've done here, you know, we, we invite a lot of county, city, you know, we're not trying. Uh to hide anything and, but as, but now because of COVID, you know, we haven't done any tours. Um and so I'd like to, Ed, Ed is gonna say a few words. He's my fifty-fifty business partner uh in this venture.
And so. My, my name's Edward Wilkinson. Uh before I go on, uh to give a brief background on myself, I would just like to add the fact that um. You know, these lean, greenhouses that we're legalizing, uh you know, any future owner of this property or future use of this property. Whether it would be cannabis or, you know, or mentals or flower production or anything like that. These greenhouses would have to be legalized at some point in order to use them. Uh so just wanted to add that point in after Anise. So my background is, I've, you know, got an MBA in business. Uh I moved here ten years ago. I started my project up in Humboldt. I was the second new project, twelfth overall project out of twenty-three hundred applicants in two thousand and sixteen to be approved by Humboldt County. It's a cannabis license. We, uh Anise was a partner, a small shareholder, actually invested with me at that time. Uh I sold that farm last year to come down and focus on this project. So we've been working on this project with the county, like Anise said, since two thousand seventeen November on revitalizing the property, bringing economic. Uh, you know, in, uh economic presence back to the property because, you know, the, the agricultural uh. Uh department and has suffered over the, you know, few years and this is a use that will be able to, uh, you know, increase, you know. Uh work and jobs and stuff like that. So I believe, you know, we've been a, a help to the local community. Uh there's been multiple nurseries that have closed down here that are non-cannabis and we've actually hired. Uh and, and Dark Heart have hired multiple of the, uh of those employees, so replacing kind of the old. Um agriculture with the new agriculture as this has become a legal activity. Uh I, as far as some other points that I would like to talk about, you know, uh the amount of cleanup work that we've done on the property has been immense. Uh we have a super state of the art, which any of you are welcome to come over anytime and inspect, uh water treatment center. So we actually um collect all of our runoff that's injected into our grow medium. That then gets recycled back through our water treatment system. So it's a, it's a four-part. Uh water treatment system is a media filter, UV filter, carbon filter, RO filter. So that gets re, re, uh we reuse all of our water that we actually run off that the plants don't suck up. And same with the nursery operation, they have a whole catchment system that recycles all of their water. So our water consumption is as sophisticated as the state gets and, and as far as cannabis growing goes. But um and yeah, so we've spent, you know, uh two years on this project and this is one of the next steps that we're at right now. There's been many other steps and hurdles that we've had to jump through and work, we've been working diligently with the county and I'd just like to introduce our team. Before I jump off and if any of them have any question, uh anything to say, then I would love for them to chime in. So we've got Camus. Uh Camus is a land use attorney. She's been working in the county, uh with the county on another, a number of other projects. And she's been coordinating with uh mainly on the road and to do with our cannabis license and making sure the neighbors are happy. And we get all the right documentation from them. Uh we have Roland and Dale from BKF Engineers. Uh they've worked with us from the start of the inception of this project. Uh we hired them uh right at the beginning. To ensure that we were above board and a role model in all of our application processes as they, you know, are one of the top. Uh civil engineers in, in the county and Bay Area, in our opinion. Uh we, I'm not sure if Ed Love's on here, but we've hired Ed Love as our architect who's worked on the coast and, you know, he's uh knows the county. And county regulations very well. And we have Dana Riggs as our biologist, environmentalist. She knows um Frenchman's Creek Road very well. She actually works with a multiple of the other neighbors and knows the water source and Frenchman's Creek. Uh probably more so than, you know, any other biologist. So we had her as the expert on that to make sure that. We weren't gonna have any impact to the environment. And all in all, you know, from the previous owner who, you know, created all these violations. We have, you know, spent an immense amount of time and money making sure that, you know, our project is in full compliance. And we want to be, continue to be a role model for the county. And uh you, by being the role model for the county, we expect, you know, everyone else that's uh applying in the county to be able to step up to. Kind of our standard that we are going to set for the county. So uh Dale, Camus, Roland, Dana, if there's anything else during our time, uh if you guys want to chime in, this is a good time. Uh thank you for my, the time.
Thank you.
I, I had a question, uh Chair.
Go ahead.
Are there any other properties on Frenchman Creek in your neighborhood who are also cultivating cannabis?
No, no. There's one other project in the county that just got approved and that's in Pescadero. I believe the company is called Cali Dutch. Um and they just got approved a few weeks ago, I think. Uh if I'm not mistaken, the MND was adopted and Steve Monowitz uh probably could um chime in on that. Uh and we're the only two licensed operators in the county. Uh there are a number of hemp operators that. Direct this, Monowitz might be able to have some input on.
But not on Frenchman's.
Not, not on Frenchman's and no ca, and no, no other cannabis licenses.
Thank you. And uh before you took ownership, was there any cannabis?
No.
Growing on your property, on that property?
It was an orchid, orchid and cherry farm.
Orchid and cherry, okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
No.
I see none. Uh we'll go to the public portion. So there is uh rules about. Doing a raise a hand.
That is.
Opportunity for people to log in for, and. So give them a few minutes for that. Not to rush this part of the process.
That's correct and um. My colleague, um Mr. Pure Wall can, can uh let us know how that will work. Just give folks some time to raise their hands.
Thank you, Madam Kirk. Can you all hear me? Okay, perfect. Um we are now opening public comments for item number one. If your hand is raised, your name will be called for this item. If you lower your hand after you, uh I will lower your hand after you, you're done speaking. Um those who are joining by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. And I believe we're giving five minutes per speak, speaker, correct?
That's correct.
Um please go ahead. Um members of the public, raise your hand if you want to speak on this item. Uh Mr. Chair, as of right now, I have, nobody has raised their hand.
Give it a few more seconds.
Okay, no speakers for this item, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. And without objection, I'll close the uh public portion. And move to uh further questions of staff and if not, and then on to discussion.
Can I interrupt? Would I need a roll call to close public comment?
I second. If I need to, to expedite it.
Okay.
Sorry, it took me a minute to unmute. Um yeah, technically all actions uh at a teleconference meeting are, are to be taken by roll call vote. We have in the past relied upon unanimous consent, um and other more informal measures to open and close public hearings, but. Um to be safe, I think it's wise to hold a roll call vote for an action such as to close a public hearing.
Thank you, Tim.
Let's move the roll call.
Commissioner Gupta.
Hi.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Hi.
Chairman Hanson.
Hi.
Thank you.
With that portion closed, we'll move on to. Let's say, uh commission have any further questions of staff or anybody else?
Nope.
Nope.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Uh yeah, I'll, I'll say a couple of words from this. Um well, I, I want to commend. Uh the applicant um for bringing this forward and legalizing, um you know, whatever. Uh problems uh there were on the property. And, and also, you know, um to. You know, congratulate you on, on getting your, your uh license to operate legally um here in the county. And um yeah, I think you, uh it looks like you. And yeah, I think you, it looks like you, you're, you got all your ducks in a row and you know, you, you will probably have a very successful operation. And with that, I just want to reemphasize that I, you know, over the years I've kept an eye on with the situation in Humboldt County. And I know, and that's why my question with regards to water and stuff like that, that Humboldt County had a huge problem of the illegal activity that was up there. And that was devastating, not only, you know, the, the water sources, but also, you know, the, the hills and for the illegal operations that were happening out there. I hope that, you know, who, I, I think there's still some, I've heard there's still, you know, a lot of illegal operation happening in the area. And I hope everything, you know, comes and gets regularized. So for that, I mean, I'm currently in support of your project and I wish you good luck.
Okay, any other comments?
To make a motion if it's.
I, I, okay, before the motion, I, I have a, like a concern that I expressed initially when I was talking about the, the different jurisdiction permits required. Because of the fact that in the past with this road, there are people who are kind of like giving money to, to clean it and fix it because there was not a hard date where the, where the road should be completed. And having those loose end, for me, it's kind of like uncomfortable in, in moving into approving this project. I just want to throw that up, 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 up there. Thank you.
Any other further, Lisa, did you have comments?
Oh, I support the project and I'm ready to make the motion if, if we're.
I would just like to make a comment. First of all, I would like to thank Summer for a very detailed, complete presentation. I think it was very well done, keeping our new mode in mind. You brought out the right kind of things. So thank you so much for that. Second, just a side question. Ed, I did not get your last name.
My last name is Wilkinson.
Wilkinson, okay. Thank you. And I'm in support of the project. So.
I think we're ready.
Yep. And I was just on to be clear, I think you've done due diligence. I think you've been upfront, which is always greatly appreciated. And I think you'd be a good addition to the neighborhood. So welcome. Used to live in that, in that area. So here, excuse me, a majority in support. Can I get a motion to that effect?
Yes. I move we approve the coastal development permit and planned agricultural permit, county file number PLN twenty eighteen zero zero three three zero by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval and attachment A.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta.
Hi.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
A no.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Hi.
Chairman Hanson.
Hi.
So we have a four one vote. Congratulations. And you go on to your next set of approvals.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Commissioners and Summer for, for joining us in the county's talk pandemic. And thank you.
Congratulations.
Off to item number two, correspondence and other matters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, please. Other than the correspondence that we received for the item that you just considered, we did receive and Janet forwarded to you a letter regarding the Cypress Point project. Attached to that email was a traffic study that's been completed. And we will address the issues that are raised by that study at the next hearing regarding that project. So unless there's questions about that correspondence you received, I'm ready to move to the next item. Okay, so as far as the next meeting goes, I'm not recommending that we have a study session, among other reasons, because we have three items scheduled at this point. The first item is a permit for a new well at Utano State Park for visitors to the park. The second item is an amendment to the local coastal program being requested by the Mid Peninsula Open Space District and Peninsula Open Space Trust. The purpose of that amendment is to excuse public agencies from requirements to record agricultural and conservation easements when they undertake land divisions for the purposes of providing public access. So there's been a lot of interest in that project and I expect that there'll be a good turnout of folks who want to talk about the matters related to that. Finally, the third item is permits and a negative declaration for a new home on La Honda Road. So that concludes my report regarding the next meeting and I'll move on to the director's report.
Steve, so we're not going to have Cypress on this one?
No. In fact, I was going to update you on Cypress as part of the director's report. Sure. But first, there's a couple of things coming up next Tuesday's board, a board meeting that I wanted to alert you to. The first being an appeal of the planning commission's denial of the coastal development permit for the purisima cemetery. You may recall that the new alleged owner of the property has undertaken development without permits there. Those were denied by the commission. The applicant has appealed that to the board. We will also, the board will also be considering an appeal of the Ifron single family residential project. That was a new home in the midcoast urban area that required a nonconforming use permit because of the substandard lot size. And the opponent to that project has appealed the planning commission's approval to the board. Finally, we have a renewal of the contract with San Francisco Airport to manage this San Francisco Airport Roundtable Committee. That's the committee that addresses the impacts of San Francisco Airport noise on surrounding communities. The airport provides funding to the county to oversee that committee. And so we're renewing our commitment to continue those efforts with the airport. So that's the items coming up on the board. After that, we're going to be initiating some virtual workshops and meetings regarding Connect the Coastside. And Connect the Coastside website on the Planning and Building Department, through the Planning and Building Department's website, you'll see the schedule for meetings that will start with an overview of the project. And then we'll be having community specific, or I would should say area specific meetings where we're going to be addressing the proposed improvements in the northern part of the urban midcoast and then the southern part of the midcoast. So the schedule for those activities are available on our website and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about that. As you know, the Connect the Coastside has an indirect relationship to the Cypress Point project. Connect the Coastside seeks to identify the long term improvements that are needed, not only to accommodate this project, but other development in the region. Going to back to Cypress Point, there are other transportation improvements that will be required to make that project feasible that will be on a slightly different schedule than the long term improvements proposed by Connect the Coastside. And those shorter term improvements are being refined as we speak right now. In fact, I'm going to be meeting with the Department of Public Works and my staff after this meeting to make sure that we have a clear picture of what we will be presenting to the community and to you come back for Cypress Point in terms of the traffic mitigations that will accompany that project. So because we needed to refine those details, we pushed back the hearing, the continued hearing on Cypress Point to June tenth at this point. So we have it penciled in for June tenth. I can tell you that there's been concerns expressed by members of the community about continuing with hearings. Under the current situation, there's also concern about from community members who are worried about, you know, having to review Connect the Coastside and participate at workshops at the same time that they're trying to prepare for the upcoming planning commission hearing on Cypress Point. I, I'm sensitive to those concerns, but I'm also sensitive to the need for mid peninsula housing to move on with their project. As you know, that they, they are holding an option to purchase that property that is costing them something in the order of $10,000 per month. So it's really important to them that we move forward with the Cypress Point hearings. And we believe it's equally important that we keep Connect the Coastside moving forward as well. So unless there's questions about Cypress Point or Connect the Coastside, I'll move on to the next item in my report. Seeing no questions. Just wanted to update you on what's happening in the planning and building offices. As you probably heard, there was a lifting of restrictions on construction by the health officer that has increased the workload of the Planning and Building Department. Because all those applications that were in the pipeline that couldn't proceed with construction now were eligible to proceed. And so we've actually been quite busy in the Planning and Building Department getting permits issued to people who want to start their projects. And the good news is we've been successful in providing these services in a manner that I think is consistent with the need to protect the health of our staff members and the general public. And we've done that by essentially providing all of our services remotely. We have had staff going into the office as necessary to do certain things. One of those things being if we have to issue a permit for an application that was submitted before we were taking in electronic applications and we have to deliver the stamped approved plans, we make arrangements with the permittee for a specific time that they will come by the office to pick up the plans. And the permit technician will drop off the approved permits and the stamped plans downstairs in order to avoid face to face contact. I, I think in our last meeting, I expressed a desire to reopen our front counter to make sure that we're providing services to everyone who needs those services. We're backing off from that a little bit for a couple of reasons. Primarily that, you know, we continue to be concerned about the spread of the virus. And we believe that restricting use of the elevators and the stairwells in the county office building to staff only will greatly limit the potential for spread. So, and then the other thing is that we found to date that we are able to provide the services we need to everyone because we are receiving phone calls from folks who are not able to navigate our electronic systems. And actually, there's been quite a few sweet stories of my staff spending quite a bit of time on the phone with applicants, walking them through step by step so they know how to get done what they need to do electronically. I've also received some very nice notes from applicants who are appreciative of the help they've received from my staff over the phone. And also appreciative of the fact that the Planning and Building Department has stayed open for business. That hasn't been across, true across the board in other jurisdictions. And our constituents have really valued the fact that we stayed open for business and are continuing to provide them those services. So at this point, the front counter will remain closed for the foreseeable future. And we will continue to monitor our ability to provide our services effectively. And we'll make adjustments as necessary to make sure everybody's receiving the services that they need. So that's my update for today and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. And any questions? Ramirez, you need to turn your phone.
There, yeah. Just a quick follow up on that. So are you doing inspections on site, onsite inspections?
So we're continuing with the video inspections. The video inspection platform has gotten very high reviews from my inspectors. They really like it and I think it works effectively. We have run into limitations, however, both for code compliance inspections and tree inspections where it's important that, for example, our arborist to be able to see a tree in relationship to other things on the ground, which you just can't quite see through video inspections. So we are doing very limited site specific inspections. And when we do those inspections, we follow very stringent safety protocols.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for that. Because I know there's, you know, a lot of people out there that want to continue with their projects and want to make sure that, you know, they, they can successfully complete them. So it is very important. And I guess, you know, the, the time is right with the technology to be able to do a lot of these things. So I'm glad.
Well, I am too. You know, I've been trying to keep you at least generally updated on our efforts to improve our online permitting system. And this whole pandemic has been a real motivator to make that happen as quickly as possible. And I'm very pleased with the progress that's being made. And I expect that we will be in a position to be all electronic paperless by the end of the calendar year.
That's, that's really good news, I think. Yeah.
Okay. Steve?
Yes.
On this Cypress Point, I, I'm not sure if I understood what, what we have decided or how we are moving forward with it.
Okay. So Cypress Point, as you recall, you, we conducted the initial hearing, we made it through public comment. And the commission decided to continue the item to a date uncertain. Right now, we have tentatively scheduled that continued hearing for June tenth.
Okay, so that's what the June tenth was.
June tenth, correct.
Okay, all right. So what is holding us back? Because we've been postponing it for a few meetings now.
Yes. Well, as you heard at the first hearing, there's a lot of concerns about the impact of the project on traffic circulation and emergency evacuation. You also heard staff take the position that while those are valid concerns, this LCP amendment is actually a reduction in the amount of development that could possibly occur on the site. So while staff doesn't believe that the LCP amendment really triggers the need to get down to the level of project specific mitigations at this stage in the process, because you'll recall that there'll be a follow up coastal development permit if this LCP amendment is approved by the commission. And it's the staff's perspective that the detailed transportation mitigations need to be identified when we issue the permit for development, not at this LCP amendment stage. Despite staff's position on that matter, the commissioners asked us to be prepared to provide as, you know, detailed and specific information as we could at the next meeting. And so that's what's held us up is we have really been trying to pin down the project specific traffic mitigation measures that we'll be able to report to you at the next meeting. And we needed to make sure that our Department of Public Works are on board with those mitigation measures and that the applicant is aware and on board with what those mitigation measures are. We, we described them in broad terms at the last meeting, but in the interest of being responsible. We described them in broad terms at the last meeting, but in the interest of being responsive to the questions and issues that were raised at that hearing, we are trying to develop greater details regarding that, so we can answer those questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Another question that I had is, I don't exactly remember the details of the project, but that was one of the projects that Commissioner Ketchum was very interested in closing in a good time. Like she was talking about 90 days, and I think we talked about four months. Has that project scheduled sometime to come back? And do, do you remember?
Well, I, I share the interest in moving this project forward as quickly as possible. In terms of specific timeframes that Commissioner Ketchum might have suggested, I don't recall, and I'd be open to hearing her thoughts on that.
Do any of the other commissioners remember that?
Well, I had asked.
Go, go ahead, Miss Ketchum, sorry.
I had asked for a date since this has been going on for so many years. And I'd asked for three months, and there was some concern that might not be possible, didn't want to be pinned down. And I don't think we, the motion, I guess I'd have to watch the video to see if it was actually a number of months in the motion, as it turned out. But I think clearly from the discussion, there was agreement that this shouldn't be allowed to just drift along as it has. Okay.
If I may, also. No, yeah, I don't think that it was not part of the motion, but it was definitely part of the comments that we had. But the question is, right now, Steve, so do you foresee that we will be conducting our meetings like this for the foreseeable future?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, I, I have a big concern, you know, that because of that particular item, that, that we make sure that, you know, people doesn't feel that we rushed or we were secretive about making our decision. So my concern is like, you know, making sure that everyone knows that if we're going to have a meeting the way we're having it right now, that everyone will be totally aware that it's going to happen, it's going to happen online. And so that we don't have, you know, some issues later on that they say, well, I never knew about it. He just went out and did it in, you know, the back room or something. So it is extremely important. And to me, I don't know if we need more time, but I think the time is not so important. What is important to me is that we actually get it right to make sure that people understand that we vetted for everybody and it was conducted properly.
I agree. Thank you for bringing that up because, you know, that's actually been one of the reasons, another reason besides the traffic mitigation issues that we're trying to refine is we want to make sure that we've got the technical capabilities able to run an effective meeting. I mean, I think this is going to be the first time that we will have in an item of such, you know, significance and interest to the community. And so that was another reason why we didn't push forward with trying to get this on for the next meeting, because we, we really want to refine the methods we're using to conduct these meetings, so we can make sure it's going to be effective.
Yeah, I have been hoping that actually, you know, we would move it farther up to a point where we can actually bring people back into a regular meeting. But I understand also that, you know, it's a time-sensitive situation for everybody, and then I think everybody wants a resolution one way or the other.
And don't all 55 speakers get notified? Didn't we collect add contacts for them?
Yes, that's right. It's going to be an extensive mailing list. So it will include everyone within 300 feet of the property, everyone who's spoken or sent us correspondence, and anyone who has otherwise identified an interest of being notified of these items. So yes, it's going to be an extensive mailing list.
Thank you. Any more commissioner questions, comments?
I just had one more comment. At our last meeting, it was Earth Day, and I thanked you for your services to the environment. But I was remiss, it was also administrative, Administrative Professionals Day. And so I just wanted to give Janet a big thank you for all the work she does to support this commission.
I like to give.
Thank you, Janet. Thank you.
Absolutely. We need to send you a present, I think.
Yeah, we, I promised her I'd make it up for her since I wasn't able to see her in person, so.
I, I, I said Janet a nice thank you email, which I'm yet still waiting for a response.
She's been busy, Mr. Santa Cruz. She's been too busy.
Oh, she doesn't need a supporter.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
So.
Let's close today's.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
See you next time.